All right, this is the Village of Peatone Board Meeting for Monday, July 14, 2014. We begin by rising to say the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Reiker.
Here.
Mr. Hupkey.
Here.
Mr. Wicker.
Here.
Mr. Hack.
Here.
Mr. Callahan.
Here.
Mr. Forsythe.
Okay, let the record show that we have a forum present and we may officially conduct business. The first order of business will be the approval or correction of the January 23, 2014 Regular Village Board Meeting Minutes. Trustees, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes, or if you see a reason to correct them, please advise us.
Make a motion to approve the minutes, June 23 meeting.
Motion by trustee Hupkey to approve the minutes as presented, seconded by trustee Wicker. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Hupkey.
Yes.
Mr. Wicker.
Yes.
Mr. Reiker.
Yes.
Mr. Hack.
Present.
Mr. Callahan.
Yes.
It carries, and those are not the official record, of the June 23, 2014 Village Board Meeting. Next item on the agenda is accounts payable and payroll. Trustees, in your packet you have the payroll for the two pay periods, the first one being June 21, in the amount of $49,290.75. The second, for July 5, 2014, in the amount of $42,341.1. Grand total on the two payrolls is $91,631.76. You also have bills from the general fund totaling $34,126.44. And bills from the water and sewer fund totaling $35,395.88. The total for those two category of bills is $69,522.32. Is there a motion to pay the bills?
I make a motion to pay the bills.
Second. Motion by trustee Wicker, seconded by trustee Reiker. Let's say that too fast, to pay the bills. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Wicker.
Yes.
Mr. Reiker.
Yes.
Mr. Hupkey.
Yes.
Mr. Hack.
Yes.
Mr. Callahan.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries, and the bills will be paid as noted. The, uh, this is a time on the agenda for any public comment and/or questions for any non-agenda item. In other words, if you're on the agenda later, wait until that point, we'll talk to you. Okay? Appears as though we do not have anybody with any public comments, so we'll move on to the reports of committees. Uh, the chief is not here, and the engineer is not here, so we'll move right on. There is no old business, but a new business is actually old business of sorts. Uh, the village engineer just walked in.
And your report is?
Catch your breath.
Ready to go.
Okay. Do you have anything to report?
I did not, and I think we have something later.
Okay, yeah, okay, we're later on the agenda then, so that's fine.
Now, getting back to where we were, um, the first item on the agenda has to do with recognizing
Tom Block as the manager of Streets and Alley's for the, well, for the good part of the last 30 years he was the manager. And, uh, Tom officially retired about two weeks ago. Two weeks, three weeks, somewhere in there. And, uh, we had a recognition for him by the, all of the people who worked with him. And I'd like at this time, uh, for us to, as a board, officially recognize Tom's 30 years. And, uh, yeah, and Tom, you can't get away without me mentioning this over and over again. When I first came here to teach, Tom was one of my students, okay? As were a number of people in this room. And, and I made the, the, I said at the retirement that we had in-house, I said, "I never realized at that point how much of a, how much a part of my life he would become over the years." And, uh, the one, I think, part of the characteristics that Tom exhibits that, uh, has impressed me is his work ethic, number one. Give Tom any assignment to do, and it has always done well, and done 120 to 150 percent. He's also a person of great character, moral character and ethics. And he's one of the people that has been able to talk to many of the seniors in the community who have various difficulties at times, uh, with, uh, things going on in their home or in their property. And Tom has been able to resolve an awful lot of that very peaceably, and to the satisfaction of a lot of folks. And so, uh, Tom, I'd like to, on behalf of the Village Board, and trustees, before we get into this, do, you've all worked with Tom in one capacity or another over the years. I take this opportunity to tell him.
Been a fine gentleman, but that's what I gotta say. Been a real.
Always been there for help, I, before I came out. So, became a trustee, he, uh, he helped me on a couple of things, took care of things. He's right there.
But now I told him, if he doesn't, he'll have a beer at 3 o'clock every day, we're gonna pull his pension.
He doesn't meet you up at the Legion.
Can I?
Sure.
I'm not a trustee.
Well, but you're.
I've been around for a while.
And you've worked with him for a while.
I have.
Very closely as a member.
That's the happiest I've seen you, my friend. I just wanna say, he, when I started here, the first time in 88, um, you know, there were a lot of jokes about being the city boy and coming down to Peatone, and Tom was great in helping me get acclimated to Peatone and teaching me, you know, how things went down here, and, um, so yeah, I was very appreciative and always, always, he was always very pleasant to work with, always had a smile on his face, so it was always fun to work with Tom.
Other members.
Tom, thanks for everything you do. I think everyone here in town appreciates it. I know everyone's gonna, gonna miss you being there.
Like I said at lunch, Tom, um, I appreciate everything. Tom and I are in the same boat, in the same line of work, and I've called on Tom numerous times for answers, and he just, he genuinely cares about this town, so, thanks, Tom.
So, Tom, we're gonna make it official. I, we gave you a certificate before, but this one is now suitably framed. Uh, so if you would come up here, please, where would you like to take the picture?
Thank you, Steve.
Okay.
She has some super camera with the super lenses.
Just get ready and close.
You could give a speech now. As much as I know you like to do that.
I just wanna thank everybody for, um, giving me the opportunity to work for the village, and, um, I'll miss it, and, uh, thank you.
The next item on the agenda has to do with a proclamation declaring July 20 to 26, 2014, Accessibility Awareness Month. And, uh, let me read the proclamation to you, and then introduce the person who is going to, uh, accept it. It says, "Whereas equal access to housing, transportation, goods and services have long been a fundamental expectation for all Peatone, Illinois and American citizens. Whereas on July 26, 1990, the Americans with Disability Act was signed into law. And whereas Peatone, Illinois with a population of 4,142, as many people with disabilities, seniors and any number of individuals who would benefit from more housing options, increased public transportation and improved accessibility. Whereas these citizens continue to experience barriers in these three regions, three categories. Local businesses lose untold profits because of the lack of accessibility. And whereas accessibility advocates are focusing their efforts on following priorities addressed as what they see necessary to promote compliance within the community. Through the leadership of Accessible Will County Campaign, encouraging construction of more housing options, creation of more transportation, voluntary efforts to remove structural barriers, increased compliance with laws requiring equal access by persons with disability, and providing resources to individuals involved in creating and utilizing that access. And whereas the Accessible Will County Campaign, which is a broad-based network of community leaders, disability advocates and business community representatives, seeks to join forces with the Village of Peatone in addressing the immense challenge of ensuring full and total accessibility for all students. Now therefore, I, Richard Durand, President of the Village of Peatone, on behalf of the village, do hereby declare the week of July 20, 2014 as Accessibility Awareness Week in the Village of Peatone, in honor of the 24th anniversary of the Americans with Disability Act, and continue our efforts towards increasing housing options, transportation and accessibility for all students, all citizens." The word "students" comes out because of my working. Uh, the gentleman that is here to accept this proclamation is Jim Albritton, who's a friend of mine, actually, uh, back in my days as Regional Superintendent and member of the Joliet Exchange Club. Jim and I worked together on a lot of projects, and he's worked also with the Guardian Angel Community Service Board, and he's here today as a board member of the Will Grundy Independence, Center for Independent Living, I'll get that in the right order, uh, which has been a group that I've worked with for probably about 20 years. And it's the group behind this, uh, proclamation, and their executive director, which is Pam Heavens, uh, is a lady that I've worked with and learned a lot from, uh, over the years. And, uh, she sent Jim as the representative, so Jim, if you would come up here and accept this proclamation on behalf of the Village of Peatone.
Yes, sir. Thank you so very much.
Turn around.
Oh, hello.
What did you just say?
I don't know where I get into that picture.
Jim, if there's anything you would like to say?
I, I would like to just, uh, Mayor, thank you very much. Uh, as, as Rich said, we've been friends for many, many years. We worked on many projects together throughout the county, that affected throughout the county. And, uh, Peatone has, uh, been a community that's well-noted throughout the county, believe it or not. As small as you are, you are well-known in the county for all that you do. The gentleman from the engineering, you're part of that reasoning, too. Um, the police, I mean, this community actually works very hard to help its, its citizens, and that is recognized, uh, 'cause there's many communities that just don't, for whatever reasons, maybe because they don't have the economics to do it, or, or the, uh, people that really, you know, have the ability to do that. But Peatone's noted for it, I've, I've, I've been a command officer with Joliet Police, and, uh, you know, we, we hear and learn a lot, but Peatone, especially with the county fair and everything else, that brings a lot of attention to you, and you've been very well-known in the community, and this is gonna be a huge thing. There's so many people in your community, uh, that if you think about it, and just take a minute to, to look at who you, your family and neighbors, how that will affect them. Can they get into a store? Uh, can they walk up a high, you know, maybe an old building that has the higher steps that they, you know, the older people can't make, and some handicap people can't make. Um, communities, uh, businesses are, are changing that, they're actually, you know, taking the time to, to fix the, um, and using their economics themselves to fix those problems. And that's what's gonna make your community better and better. So, thank you very much for this, and I appreciate it. Thank you, Jim. Thank you all very much.
And give my regards to him.
I definitely will note that you're a ward.
Thanks.
All right, moving on to the agenda, we get to ordinance and resolutions, and the first one is an ordinance regard, regarding a variance request for an oversized garage addition at 337 West Crawford. Uh, Mike Cryda.
Cryda.
owner. And George.
Uh, Mr. Mark Cryda submitted an application for a variance to construct an oversized garage addition. Mr. Cryda wished to construct a 16 by 20-foot addition. After public notice requirements were met, the Planning and Zoning Commission conducted a public hearing. There were no remonstrators at the public hearing, wherein, according to meeting vote parties agree to the smaller addition, a 20-foot, which served the need with less impact on the lot and neighbors. Planning and Zoning Commission conducted findings of fact, affords a favorable recommendation, a favorable recommendation for approval of a 12 by 20-foot garage, following conditions: no water or sewer services, garage is not to be used as a sleeping or dwelling area, business uses permitted without home occupation permit, stick frame construction exterior and roughness match existing garage, all uses must be solely for the personal use of the property owner, and most, owner must comply with all Village ordinances and state and federal law, and, um, to make the long, last paragraph short, variances and additions run with the land. If the Board concurs that the Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation, they may adopt the Planning and Zoning Commission findings of fact by reference. Should the Board differ, the petition may be sent back to the Planning and Zoning Commission, but the Board may adopt their own findings of fact.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Cryda is here, vote?
Yes, yes.
Uh, board members, do you have any questions?
I have a question. Uh, that's okay. The, uh, 16 by 20-foot original addition?
Yes.
And it was brought down to a 12 by 20?
Yes.
Was that a suggestion of you or the Planning and Zoning Commission?
Uh, Planning and Zoning Commission. My understanding is that they're supposed to have a 20-foot setback from your, 'cause my house is, is a detached garage, so it's 20-foot setback. With the 16-foot setback, it would still be 32 feet, but, uh, Mr. Maltese, part of the commission, he didn't like the, the fact that I'm on the extra four feet, so therefore you brought 12 by 20 instead of 16 by 20.
How did you come up with the 16 by 20 dimensions?
I'm governor, retired police officer from Will County, um, and I worked construction forever, and the dimensions are easier, certainly, that's all. I mean, that 16 by 20 was basically just for the, obviously, the extra storage chair for personal property, uh, but nothing more than just dimensions.
Right, but I mean, the paperwork says that there's an additional driver, so I mean, is that what you consider to be your, if there's a new vehicle in the garage, that's the space you'll lose? Is that how you came up with that?
Exactly right. Oh, exactly right. Um, I have a, you know, a lawn tractor, snowblower, I have personal property, the fact that it's gonna have to move from that area for the new driver, and.
All the stuff that all of us have is always trying to find room for.
Yes, exactly right.
'Cause I had taken a ride by there myself, and I, I just wasn't seeing what Mr. Maltese was seeing, but.
I'd be more than happy.
That's just my opinion.
I'd be more than happy to do 16 by 20, but that's strictly up to you.
Well, I mean, a couple of the things that were brought forward is the existing garage is already oversized, okay? And the findings of fact, I believe in the important board, it was noted that the existing garage is, uh, 866 square feet, and the standard is 750, okay? Um, and increasing it to 16 by 20 would use almost all of the 30% lot coverage that's available for that lot.
But then.
Now, Mr. Cryda was comfortable with the 30% lot coverage. I mean, it came out to 29 points something, so, you know, he would have no room for additional lot structures, accessory structures, but he was comfortable with that. That's some of the reasoning behind.
But then 1100 square feet is not, is what, is what's being questioned here, it's, it's the actual 16 by 20 brought down to a 12 by 20. Is, is the lot coverage the, the main concern from the, from the Board's perspective about how much lot area is, is being used?
No, I think there is a, I think there is, Mr. Cryda, correct me if I misspeak, but I don't wanna be, I don't wanna be impartial here.
Sure.
Uh, I think those are two of the concerns, I think another of the concerns was just the long frontage it would have, a long, uh, uh, is it?
Conrad.
Conrad, that you, that's your other corner, yeah. As you, as you go down Conrad, you'd see basically all buildings along that street frontage, profile, uh, between the house and the existing garage and the additional lineal footage of the addition. Uh, that's, it's a lot of building along that frontage, without much green space on the frontage, and that was one of the things that was noted in the Planning and Zoning Commission.
I'm sure you have it in your notes, but I have a pretty, very deep lot, and again, with the addition of 16 by 20, I'm still roughly 30 to 32 feet from my existing home. But again, I don't wanna get into semantics.
George, if we enhance the Planning and Zoning's recommendation, is that of, is it the equivalent of rejecting their recommendation to, to exceed their request or their approval?
You would probably have to do your own findings of fact.
We would, we would, to, to go above and beyond.
Right. Okay. Because their findings of fact were based on a 12 by 20-foot garage.
Okay. Does the, does the reduced size accomplish what you're hoping to accomplish?
Again, I'm basically speaking about, you know, four feet, which is the inside of a car, by 20 feet. Um, again, I don't wanna get into a, an argument or disagreement with the Board, or the village. Um, the 12, you know, I would obviously have to make do, I would definitely like the 16 by 20, but again, that's strictly up to you, your Board.
Procedurally, the, the choices you have, Board, is to accept the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission, send it back to them, or adopt your own finding of facts. What was your timeline on this? When did you wanna get started on this project?
Obviously.
What was your timeline on this? When did you wanna get started?
Whenever I got the, okay, I mean, probably give a copy for it in the next.
The sooner the better.
I, I don't wanna delay to respond to the fact that I had to start in, you know, October, November, another year, because I would see now is, construction is obviously the easier time to do it during the season. And that's the reason why the question, as of last month, I filed the request for the variance.
As long as you're willing to accept the 12 by 20, I make a motion to accept it.
Second. Motion by trustee Wicker, seconded by trustee Reiker, to accept the recommendations of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Will the clerk please call the roll? Oh, and this would be, uh, adopt the ordinance, which is 14 dash 09, uh, an ordinance approving a variance for garage size at 337 West Crawford Street. Okay. Now, will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Wicker.
Yes.
Mr. Reiker.
Yes.
Mr. Hupkey.
Since there were no arguments from Mr. Cryda about the change, I say yes.
Mr. Callahan.
Yes.
And Mr. Hack.
Yes.
Okay. Motion carries, recommendation goes through 12 by 20.
Can I ask him just one question?
Sure.
Should I again, argue, should it come back to the Board, back to the Zoning Commission? I guess it would have been delayed.
If it got sent back to the Zoning Commission, it would take another month or so, or actually more than that, probably.
Well, I don't know that it would have to go through a public hearing again, uh, since I lost what the original petition was. Assuming that's correct.
That's correct, there were no.
So, it would be at the next P and Z meeting, and then it would come back to the Village Board, assuming I had enough time to draft a report between, uh, uh, 'cause I have to do the minutes and everything else, between the P and Z meeting and the very next Board meeting. Usually it's, it's two Board meetings.
Yeah.
Sometimes it's one, it doesn't have any boundaries.
Probably late August.
Yeah.
That's still a, okay. I guess I should have been more accurate, asked you to, my request. Gentlemen, I thank you for your time.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. All right, the next item on the agenda is a resolution, uh, to submit the reconstruction of Rath J Road from Corning Avenue to Joliet Road as a 2014 STP project. George?
The Will County Transportation Committee administers the federal highway funds for Will County. The primary funding mechanism is STP fund. The STP program, that Surface Transportation Plan, uh, the STP program funds 80% of Phase II engineering and construction costs. The village uses STP funding to perform the reconstruction of Rath J Road a few years ago. STP funds may only be used on rural aid urban routes. To date, the only village roads that have FAU designations are Rath J Road and Corning Avenue. We have applied for West Street designation as an FAU route, but the application is still under review. Staff is proposing two projects for the grant cycle. Each project would need separate applications and resolutions, and would receive independent competitive scoring from the selection committee. First project is the extension of Rath J Road reconstruction from Corning Avenue north to Joliet Road. When the village engineered their first Rath J Road reconstruction, Phase I engineering was also completed from Corning Avenue to Joliet Road. Therefore, this project has scoring and timeline advantages over many other projects, as Phase I engineering is already complete. The scope of work is basically the same as the first Rath J Road project, with the addition of a box covert at the Oak Street Tributary Crossing. As discussed in comprehensive plan, this box covert would have a beneficial impact on Oak Street flooding. The total project cost for the Rath J Road is 2.5 million. We would apply for 2.0 million in federal funding, leaving the village portion at $535,000. The second project is the resurfacing of Corning Avenue from Rath J Road to Route 50. That's a typo in your, in your, uh, package, it's to Route 50. With the exception of the area between First and Third Streets, this project would seek funding from LEO, which is local agency functional overlay. This project is not as involved as the Rath J Road scope. The scope simply includes engineering reconstruction to overlay or repave Corning Avenue. The total project cost is $580,000, requests federal funding of $464,000, and a local match of $117,500. LEO projects receive a lower priority. LIFO projects receive a lower priority on scoring than do full STP projects, and are usually the last to be funded. There have been grant cycles when very few, if any, LIFO projects were awarded. Both of these projects scheduled design engineering in 2015 with construction in 2016 or 17. It should be noted, the village portion of the cost, but only twenty percent remained substantial. When the first Rath J Road project was awarded, the village postponed local paving projects to accrue funds for local match. Award of one or both of these projects may require the same local project deferrals. If local match is not available when needed for the project, the village may amend the project schedule to a later program year, basically to accumulate more funding. Mr. Colombaris, is there anything else I need to add to that? Do you would like to add to that?
I think the only thing I'd add is, for the first project, the Rath J Road, the cap on the funding is a million dollars. Village would be requesting two million, which is acceptable. Basically, what they would do is tell you that you wouldn't be eligible for a project the next year. So, I mean, obviously, if you got this one, you'd be pretty happy with that anyway, I would think, so it really wouldn't be that big a deal. But I just want to echo George's comments. Because your Phase One has already been approved, the project will rank higher. Now, we can never sit here and guarantee that you're going to get it, because we really don't have control over those things, and we don't know how many projects will actually get funded and all of that, but we know how the projects are ranked, once they're submitted, and having your Phase One engineering approved already by I-DOT will definitely get you points that other projects won't. So, that at least bodes well for that project. As George said, the other project, those projects are not ranking as high, but again, it's, I mean, it's one of those things where there's a pretty minimal cost for doing an application, a pretty big benefit if you get the grant, so.
Yeah. I'm going to add a little bit to this. In talking to the people on the transportation committee at Governmental League who administer this program, we were encouraged to submit the resurfacing of Rath J Road because of the dollar amount of it. A lot of times, the, the focus is always on the pot of money that's going out to get as many of the bigger jobs for the community taken care of as you can, but sometimes after the, it's gone out, they have five hundred thousand, seven hundred and fifty thousand, and everybody else's projects are a lot more than that, and this puts us in the eligible for, well, we got another project for this one. The, getting funding out of the two different funds is not, it's not connected in any way. They're two separate decisions, so we are putting that in, in the hopes that if we could get that one too, that would be terrific, so.
And one final thing I'd add is, they'll put the projects in a queue, right? So, they'll rank them, and, and just what the mayor was saying is, if some of the projects towards the top, if the communities decide they don't, they can't move forward, because they can't come up with their match or something, those projects start to fall off, you know, you could move up as well, so.
So, in effect, we're, we're getting ourselves in the consideration point, so if we don't at least apply, we can't expect to get the money, so. This will, the, the Rath J Road Fund project will be a major one for us because of not only completing the road, but the, the stormwater issue that it'll help us address, and again, this is with federal money.
So, the sidewalks too?
Yeah.
Because there's actually more people that walk on that road than, than Wilmington.
That's a good point.
So, yeah, that's, because that road will be engineered essentially the same way the other half was.
Right.
So, we'll have all the sidewalks, we'll have all the other things, so, yeah. All right, so I'm going to require, any other questions on either of the projects?
Just, it's not really related to this project specifically, but just kind of worth knowing.
What?
Is that south of Rath J, across from the high school? That's not village property right now, correct?
I'm sorry, south of Rath J.
South of Rath J, across from the high school. The fields.
You mean west of Rath-
I got my direction. I'm sorry.
North of South Road.
Everyone is looking at me like, what am I talking about?
Anything north of Corning and west of Rath J is unincorporated.
Okay. Do we have any of our utilities running in that area? In other words, while, if in fact we end up with Rath J, Rath J torn up over there, might it be worthwhile to-
Run utilities.
Run utilities while we have the ground open?
That's something we would look at as engineering goes a little more forward. I mean, that's something we did on, on the south half of Rath J Road.
So, something to consider.
Yeah, we actually, we actually replaced the main, the oversized main, so that's something we would look into, sure.
A lot of that funding came out of our water and sewer funds, correct?
Yeah, that, that would not be eligible out of the STP funding.
Right.
But it's still, as you're pointing out, was expensive to do at that point in time, because you've already got the excavation work done.
Good questions. Others?
My question I have is, those box culvert that would relieve some of the Oak Street flooding, if you're not changing the width of the drainage creek, how big is this culvert going to be to try to relieve some of that?
Do you recall?
Well, we talked about it in the drainage study we did for the comp plan. I don't remember the size of, of the end. It's pretty significant. It's a double box culvert. And the whole, the whole point of this, and again, we talked about it then, want to talk about it today, we're not going to remove the Oak Street area from being in floodplain by doing this project.
I think that's what I, I want to get to, man, is I don't want people thinking that it's going to dry out totally.
That's a good, that's a good point, and, and that, that's exactly right. We, we can't fix that by that project, but what this does is, again, based on the timing of the storms, if, sometimes we may get a ten, twenty-five year storm, we've had a few of those lately, if we get the water out and downstream, and we were talking about putting flap gates on the end of these box culverts, get the water out before the creek comes back, you know, we can at least get some of the nuisance flooding taken care of with this project, but in a hundred year storm, when the creek comes back and comes back over the road, we have to re-profile the whole road of Rath J to try to keep it from backing up, which would be quite an expensive undertaking.
Okay.
But that's a good point.
Just putting those sorts of back flaps on, open us, open us up to any sort of complaint or liability from whoever might be affected by the water not flowing where it ordinarily would, such as the county or anyone else who may experience additional flooding?
I think, it's a good, it's a really good question. I think the, when we look at the size of the drainage area that we're talking about, when we talk about bringing it back, the comp stores that we might see coming back through Oak Street is pretty minimal, so I wouldn't see it as really raising any flood elevation downstream, it's really just stopping it from coming back. And remember, that's just in a lower frequency storm. A hundred year storm is what we talk about really flooding, and in that case, it's still going to come back over the road, so you're not going to increase that hundred year.
All right, other questions? Here again, I'm going to take these in order. Each one is a separate resolution, each project, so the first one, I'm going to ask for a motion for is Resolution fourteen dash R zero four, a resolution regarding the 2014 STP Rath J Road project. Is there a motion to adopt Resolution fourteen dash R zero four?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by trustee Hupkey, second by trustee Heck, to approve Resolution fourteen dash R zero four regarding the 2014 STP Rath J Road project. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Hupkey?
Yes.
Mr. Heck?
Yes.
Mr. Callahan?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Wick.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries, and we will submit that project. Next resolution would be Resolution fourteen dash R zero five, a resolution regarding the 2014 Corning Avenue resurfacing project. Is there a motion to adopt Resolution fourteen dash R zero five?
No move.
Motion by trustee Wicker.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Riker, to adopt Resolution fourteen dash zero R five regarding the 2014 Corning Avenue resurfacing project. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Wicker?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Hupkey?
Yes.
Mr. Heck?
Yes.
And Mr. Callahan?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries, and that will also be submitted. Cross your fingers, gang. If we can get some, if we get these things done, it's a nice chunk of federal money going to help us. The money that the folks here send to Washington, that's money we're going to get back, so. All right, next item on the agenda is participation by taxing bodies in the paving project.
We have had inquiries at the staff level from other taxing bodies to participate in the 2014 village paving project. Joint participation may lower costs due to mobilization and quantity considerations. We have had interest from the library district, the school corporation, and the park district. Scopes of work have yet to be determined, but primarily focused on parking lots. Each body would have an individual discreet scope of work, it would be a separate option under our village contract, and once bids are opened, each body would determine whether they wish to proceed with the work. If not, that work would be delivered from the contract. The village would pay the contractor following an approval notice from an authorized person with each body. Each taxing body would need to adopt an IGA, intergovernmental agreement, stipulating that will reimburse the village for the cost of the project. District's participation in the program should be conditioned on passion of the, of the resolution or the intergovernmental agreement. You have a copy of that in front of you, just for your reference, that's a, that's a template, fill in the blank for each of the districts, should they choose to participate.
And the, the projects at the, the, the library board, the library board is looking at doing their parking lot, and the school district is looking at doing the, with the now, the junior high, the road in front of it, and the parking, and the park district is looking at doing the strip that is on their side of the property line of the school parking lot and Blue Devil Drive, and by all of us going in on one project, the, the bidders would be able to save the cost of moving machinery and, and coming back at a different time to set it up, so all of the bodies in town would be, governing bodies would be able to, to save some money and get some stuff done that needs to be done. So, that's the idea behind it. Questions?
I understand the joint participation for the low cost, but when the contracts open and if they opt out, what's that do to our price? Do they still honor that price?
Yes, it should be bid as an alternate. Well, yeah. And actually, as, before you asked that, I was going to ask a question, because I just was thinking along the same line, something I had thought of when I talked to George earlier, and that is, if we have the village project as its own scope, and then all of these separate projects as alternates, I'm not sure how the contractors would bid that, because, you know, it's almost like they have to assume it's all going to be done, and if it is, then you will get better unit prices, but if they don't know that they're not going to be done, I don't know if they won't bid them as though they got to mobilize anyway. You know what I mean? Because they're, they're not going to take a chance and say, we're going to bid them thinking they're all going to be awarded, that we only have to mobilize once, and then the other entities start to take, say, decide they don't want to do it. I'm not, I'm not exactly sure how it all works under that premise. I hadn't thought about it until, literally, just as we were sitting there, and you raised that question. I don't think it'll affect, I mean, again, if we go in with our program as the, as what we're going to award on, that is what the unit prices will be.
Right.
And we can show the other projects as alternate bids, I'm, I'm just not sure how it's going to affect actually those prices. The village prices really should be okay. Does that make sense? Do you guys understand?
Yeah, I, I understand your point, and from the perspective of these being additional options, it's, I think it's a way for the bidder, the contractor, to get some additional work with, in a more cost-effective way, because they don't have to come back, bring everything back on it as it's, it's a separate job. So, I think the other entities will probably benefit, because our project is larger. I think it's the largest project of the street, yeah.
Yeah.
Theirs are just smaller things.
I think, at the end of the day, that's what happens. I think they get the benefit.
Yeah.
Because you're going to have your base bid, and then the contractors will say, well, if this guy says yes, and this guy says yes, now we've just increased the quantities, and then I can give a lower unit price, so, but they'll put it into that part of the bid, right?
Right, that's correct.
Okay.
And the reality of it is, people we're serving are the ones who are going to save money, the taxpayers, so I think it's a way that we can help some of the other taxing bodies without bringing any undue burden on ourselves. So, what do we have to do?
Basically, just, just, just concur that it's all right to have the other public entities joining in on the, on the paving project as, as alternate bids.
I don't see any injections. Okay. Then via consensus, that's a direction I believe we want to go. Good. And, God willing, we'll be able to get some real sore spots that they're going to be taking care of with this joint agreement. All right, next item on the agenda, acknowledge retirement.
Under state law, the pension board reviews evidence and awards or denies disability claims. Sergeant Larry Sheddwell appeared before the police pension board requesting retirement due to a non-work-related disability. Police pension board heard the evidence and authorized Mr. Sheddwell's retirement due to the non-work-related disability. Role of the village board this evening is to formally acknowledge Mr. Sheddwell's retirement, so Mr. Sheddwell's active position with the village may be closed.
Basically, we're looking for a motion acknowledging the decision of the pension board concerning retirement of Larry Sheddwell for non-working disability effective July eighth, 2014?
No move.
Okay, motion by trustee Wicker.
Seconded.
Seconded by trustee Riker, to approve the decision, to acknowledge the decision of the police pension board regarding the retirement status of Larry Sheddwell for the non-work-related disability effective July eighth, 2014. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Wicker?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Hupkey?
Yes.
Mr. Heck?
Yes.
Mr. Callahan?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Wick?
Yes.
Mr. Hupkey?
Yes.
Mr. Heck?
Yes.
Mr. Callahan?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Hupkey?
Yes.
Mr. Heck?
Yes.
Mr. Callahan?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Hupkey?
Yes.
Mr. Heck?
Yes.
Mr. Callahan?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Hupkey?
Yes.
Mr. Heck?
Yes.
Mr. Callahan?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Hupkey?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Hupkey?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Hupkey?
Yes.
Mr. Heck?
Yes.
Mr. Callahan?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Heck?
Yes.
And Mr. Callahan?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Hupkey?
Yes.
Mr. Heck?
Yes.
Mr. Callahan?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Hupkey?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Heck?
Yes.
And Mr. Callahan?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries, and therefore we will submit that project.
Next resolution would be Resolution fourteen dash R zero five, a resolution regarding the 2014 Corning Avenue resurfacing project. Is there a motion to adopt Resolution fourteen dash R zero five?
No move.
Motion by trustee Wicker.
Seconded.
Seconded by trustee Riker, to adopt Resolution fourteen dash zero R five regarding the 2014 Corning Avenue resurfacing project. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Wicker?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Hupkey?
Yes.
Mr. Heck?
Yes.
Mr. Callahan?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Hupkey?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Hupkey?
being available, uh, during the car show, and that the car show would clean up the trash downtown, and that this event per se, and the open alcohol, would end by 7:00 PM, go from 10:30 to 7:00 PM, which is what it's been in the past. I don't need an official, do we need an official motion on this, or just an acknowledgement?
Probably just an acknowledgement of the consensus, that that was the understanding that was passed.
That was passed, yes. So, we did grant it, though.
We did grant it, but we didn't have the specifics lined up there. And there was a question as to, were we giving the same permissions that we had given in the past?
I think just acknowledgement that, yes, you were.
I'm making a motion to acknowledge the situation.
Second.
Motion by trustee Wicker, seconded by trustee Hupkey, officially acknowledging the understood unwritten parts of the special event for the car show to include the usual open alcohol rules and time rules and cleanup rules. Can I even call the roll when you're set?
Mr. Wicker?
Yes.
Mr. Hupkey?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Callahan?
Yes.
Mr. Hack?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries, and we have officially acknowledged the, that we understood at the time that that was all included in the special events permit granted. All right, we have finished our agenda at this point, and we have need to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing collective bargaining. There will be no action, incidentally, after we come out of that executive session. And I say that for the benefit of those who don't want to wait around. All right? So, is there a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of collective bargaining?
Motion.
Motion by trustee Hupkey, seconded by, trustee Wicker, to go into executive session for the purpose of collective bargaining. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Hupkey?
Yes.
Mr. Wicker?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Callahan?
Yes.
Mr. Hack?
Yes.
Okay. Motion carries, we are going into executive session on that purpose. And as I stated earlier, there.